Thank you for having me out. A little bit about the Heartland Institute. We are a free market think tank based out of Chicago. How many people have heard of us prior to this? Wow, we got a lot of fans in the room. That's excellent. There's also some literature in the back on some of the stuff that we produce. And what we do is we discover, develop, and promote free market solutions to America's social and economic problems. How many people in the room think that education is both a social and an economic problem for us right now? Well, we like to find solutions to that. And again, I agree 100% that we have to thank these people for running. Not every single one of them is going to agree with the things that I say, or we're not all going to agree with the things that they say, but they are standing up. What we do, and just one slight correction, we don't really lobby, because that's illegal for a 501(c)(3) to do that. What we do is we produce research, we disseminate research, and we get it into the hands of the people who need it. So our information goes out to hundreds of local elected officials, thousands of them actually, and every single state legislator in the United States. And then when we do other issues like health care, it goes to Congress.
That's why I call it lobbying.
Okay, well, and what it is, is here's an idea, try it, but we can't say, "Vote for this candidate or vote for this bill." What we can say is, "This is a good idea, and if you put it into a bill, it will be better policy for the citizens." I want to go through something really quickly on education, and then I'd rather just kind of go through Q&amp;A, and I'd be more than happy to take questions from the candidates as well, just because what I'm going to do is a little bit of a radical departure from what most of you think about education. There is a movie out right now called The Cartel, and it talks about education in the terms of what it really is, which is a cartel. I come up with a little bit longer word for it. I call it a government education complex. How many people remember the words military-industrial complex? Government education complex is the same thing, a little bit different industry, and quite frankly, for the money we spend on it, a little bit or a lot less effective than our military-industrial complex. And both of them have issues with overspending, bureaucracy, and yes, the C-word corruption. So what you have here is the Department of Education, then you've got 50 states with school codes and a state Department of Education, Illinois State Board of Education, ISBE, here. Then you have all across America, 15,000 districts. Some, here in Illinois, are one school district, single school, and then you've got bigger districts like Chicago Public Schools and Rockford. And then you have, all of these districts have to do the things that they do based on a set of rules for both the state and from the federal government. And if you've watched what No Child Left Behind and Race to the Top have done, they have basically federalized education to the degree that these excellent people, whether they agree with me on my solutions or not, are really hamstrung. The stuff that they actually can do to improve the education here in Rockford is really pretty small. And I think that that should change. I think citizens should control the education of what goes on around for their children. And quite frankly, I think there's some very simple ways to do it. Without going into too much detail, the Heartland Institute promotes every single idea that brings education and the power of education closer and closer and closer to the parent until the parent should have literally almost all the control over education. Now, if the government's funding something, it's going to put some standards on it, and they're going to put some rules on it. But that doesn't mean that when the government hands you a housing voucher, it doesn't say, they don't create a government housing system. How many people think that if we had a government housing system, our real estate market would be robust? How many people think that if we had a government car system? Well, you can buy a nice car, but only if you live in a nice car district. And if you don't live in a nice car district, you can only buy this car. It's absurd. So what I keep on trying to tell people, and there's a lot of ways to do it, is that we need to move our entire education system. My title at Heartland is the Director for the Center for Education Reform, and I've literally tried to get myself to stop talking about education reform, which is a failed strategy that we've been trying to do for 50 years, 60 years, and it hasn't worked. And it's getting more and more expensive. And I want to talk about transforming education, education transformation. And what do we transform our education system? How do we do it? Well, I'll get to it in a couple ideas in just a second. But if that's our goal, and I would argue that it should be, then what is our goal to get to? And it's this: We need to move away and transition out of a government education complex dictated by a system. And we need to move toward what I call an open-source learning network that is designed to have all of our children attend a vast new array of education service providers. We have a 19th-century education system sucking down $600 billion, almost, of our taxpayer dollars, and it is set up for a farm industrial economy that we no longer live in, and we have very, very powerful financial interests that want this system to stay the same way. And it's not working. And our nation is at risk, as they said in 1983, when we are in a position where we can't compete with India, we can't compete with China, we can't compete with anybody. And instead, what we're doing is we're putting out one of the lowest-quality education products in terms of educating our children for the most amount of money. How do you fix it? Well, everybody talks about reforms like charter schools, and everybody talks about reforms like vouchers. There's other reforms: ending strikes, ending teacher tenure, taking away collective bargaining rights. These are all ideas that may or may not work, but the way they have to work, the way we have to work through them is not to sit there and say, "Let's do another little reform. Let's spend a little bit more money here, and we can fix this little thing." It's not going to work. We've done it for 50 years. This is another sentence I'd like you to take away from this: The system we have right now cannot be reformed in its present context. We have to completely change the context, and we have to move toward a system where the vast majority of money follows the child to a vast new array of education providers. And that's the direction we have to go. So yes, tax credits, tuition tax credits, maybe property tax credits. If someone decides they want to take their child out of a school and go to a different kind of school, they should do that. Vouchers? Vouchers are a good idea. Everybody says, "Don't use vouchers." Oh, shh, call it a scholarship. If you call it a voucher, then people won't like it. Well, get used to it. It's a good idea, you should like it, and I'll explain it if you want me to. We've got charters. They're a great idea. They're a great way to take a school that is run by a government education complex and convert it back to a neighborhood school run by the parents and the children and the principal and the teachers who work there, instead of a school run by a gigantic entity out of, I mean, literally, Race to the Top and the Common Core standards. There's one or two good ideas about what they're doing there, and it's mixed up into a maelstrom of nonsense that is just designed to create an employment agency for consultants, bureaucrats, and people pushing a bunch of paper around. So then there's another idea that's out there that actually wraps all these ideas, and this is what Heartland is working on, it's called the Parent Trigger. I noticed when I was looking up some Rockford stats that almost all the schools in Rockford are on some kind of early warning status, except for the two charters, which are not. Surprise, surprise. And then you say, "Well, maybe we should have some more charters here." And everybody's, "Oh, no, no, it'll drain money from our school system." Well, no, it's not about the school system. It's about the child. And here's the way to really look at it. What's really happening is the system is draining money from the education of all your children by creating this massive bureaucracy that has to get funded, as opposed to the money following the child to the best option for that child. So when someone tells you, "Don't let anything drain the money from the system," it's like, "Well, maybe the system is the problem." And I think that that's one of the things we should start talking about. What we're working on right now is something called the Parent Trigger. And if your child is attending a failing school, you get together with the parents of that school, and you get a petition signed, and if the majority of the people, the parents at that school, sign the petition, it has to flip into closure, voucher option, or a charter school. And that's parental control. This is already law in California, and a bunch of parents at a very poor school in a place called Compton have flipped the school, and guess what the system did? The system went nuclear up. It didn't even try to use the law to do some other options. Instead, it just basically called their petitions illegitimate and stonewalled. Now it's in court. So these are some of the things we have to do. I'd like to take some questions, but let me give you a couple of numbers here. Rockford, for example, and I'm sure these folks here are much better experts on specifically what goes on in Rockford than I am. I'm a think tank guy who comes in and says, "Well, here's some ideas." They're the ones that are actually in the trenches. $308 million spent on Rockford schools. Comes out to about $10,000 per child. If you've got a classroom of 15, that's about $150,000 classroom. If you've got a class of 25, it's a $250,000 classroom. Average teacher salary: $66,000. Now, there's teachers that make more, some that make less. But if you've got, I added up all of the salaries, and they come out to $150 million. So after $308 million going into the system, all the salaries, administration and teachers and all the other items that are under this line item, only come out to $150 million, $148 million. So half the system isn't even about paying the people who run the system or work in it. Couple of numbers: $11 million in administration. I just read an article coming over here, I'm trying to prepare myself to be somewhat prepared about Rockford, and I hear that there was just about to be a bunch of cuts, and they said, "No cuts, we're not going to cut any spending. We're going to hope that the economic environment improves and not make cuts, because we don't want to lose programs." Everybody's all worried about programs. $2.5 million on social workers, $2.2 million on psychologists, $19 million on learning behavior specialists one? Last time I checked, children are learning machines. You put them in front of a TV set and teach them SWIL, and they're going to learn SWIL. You put them in front of a good piece of, a great teacher working with a good curriculum, and they're going to learn how to read. $20 million for learning behavior specialists? I'd like to, I think someone should investigate that number. Administration: $11 million out of $150 million. That might not be a bad number. But then you look at another item on here, let's see which one this added up to. What was it? Resource consultative teacher, speech and language impaired, orientation to industrial technology. Some of these are really good ideas, but wait a minute, what's a curriculum specialist? Do you really need to spend $4 million on a curriculum specialist when, how many people really think education is, it doesn't need to be as complex as we make it? And that's some of the things they're saying, it's like, "Wait a minute, what if the money followed the child, and the parents said, 'Well, this is the best option for my kid, and I'll send him to this school, and I'll send him to this place where they can go for something else.'" So I didn't want to go too long, but here's the good news. I think we're on the cusp of huge changes. And I'll show you this little thing right here. This is my Evo, it's not an iPhone, it's actually recording my little speech here. And I can get on here, I can do voice command, and I can say, "Illinois Interactive Report Card," and it finds it for me on the internet, and I can say, "Rockford," and it'll find the data for me. That iPad over there is capable of delivering rocket science content right off of iTunes on something called iTunes U, where you can go to iTunes U and learn molecular biology from the best molecular biologist in Oxford, and maybe another perspective from someone at Stanford. And it's free. The cost of everything we need and use to educate our children is dropping like a stone, except inside this bureaucracy. And we could have, in the next few years, a 21st-century education system where we dump the 19th-century bureaucracy, and we have distance learning, we have people who can augment that distance learning with the best ideas and the best content and the best walking them through it, all outside of this bureaucratized system. And I think that we're going to get there, because quite frankly, as a nation, we have to. We can't afford the current education system financially, and we can't afford it culturally. So it is going to change. And with that, I'll take a couple of questions if anybody has them. Sir?
The comments on the movie The Child, I think it's by Perro of Wright County, and also charlaty of the delivery that we know of the world.
Those are good resources to look at. I'd also recommend anybody and everybody watching the Cartel movie from my friend Bob Bowden, along with the other movies like Waiting for Superman. Cartel is probably the most informative. Anybody else have a question?
I have a question.
Ma'am.
Have you looked at the Illinois Report Card AYP results for the charter schools we have here in Rockford this year?
I have not looked at them this year. The website that I looked at, the Interactive Report Card, said that they were both not on, that they were not on early warning status. I don't know exactly what their AYP is.
Well, they're not on early warning status. First of all, they haven't been in existence long enough to be on any status.
Okay, fair enough.
Second of all, Legacy Academy is 52% AYP, which is far below most of our public schools in Rockford. The other one is 61% to 62%, which is about par for what most of our schools do.
Okay, and it's a good point, and the question becomes, who's going there? How fast should a school be expected to turn around? There's, I'll tell you one thing about the education reform movement, and this is the field that I'm in, because we look at a lot of studies. We tend to overpromise. "Oh, just go to vouchers and everything will be fixed tomorrow." Well, it doesn't, it doesn't work like that. It takes a long time. But it's not, I mean, I've seen, I've seen the studies from both sides that say, "Charters are fantastic and they work," and I've seen the other studies that say, "Only some charters work, others don't." The fact of the matter is that a charter school is more independent from the system and therefore has more opportunity. And guess what? When it doesn't work, it's much easier to close down. I'll make a deal with anybody who's suspicious about charters. You let us shut down all the bad schools and bring in new management all the time until they get it right, and I'd be more than happy to shut down bad charters very quickly. Any other questions? How much time do I have?
Five more minutes.
Five more minutes, sir?
My name's Michael Full. I'm a resident of Rockford, West Virginia, originally from Coop Town. And one of my nephews, or two nephews, my nephew Austin, lives in this place in Coop Town. He's now in a Maine-South public high school. And when he graduated from, he played from year-round charter school. He graduated first in his class GPA while also having been a student of a IEP student of a Canadian Socrate, Trail and Socrate, suffered from the school disruption.
Michael, I need a quick question, please. Thank you.
I'm just saying, I'm an advocate for year-round charter schools, and the future has supported year-round charter school, which is part of the public school system, but it's different than the nine-month model that the public school system is operated on.
Michael, as an advocate, here's a great idea for everybody. Maybe that's perfect for Michael's nephew. And maybe someone else, something else is perfect for him. And here's why the system can't be reformed in its present context. There's not enough money in the world to make this system work for everybody all the time, because it just can't be done inside of a closed system, top-down bureaucracy, run by special interests. And it's not just, you know, everybody says, "Oh, that's all about the unions." It's not just about the unions. It's about the administrators. It's about the bond dealers that love to churn bonds for building schools. It's about all of this stuff. It's an industry. It is a complex, whether you want to think about it that way or not. It really is. So how about this? You have a system where the child and the parent decide what the best idea might be, and you have, and you have a way that the government helps, you know, set some standards and set some prudential, some proof of concept and a timeline, and then you're able to have your child go to the school that works best for them. Sir?
Just a last question here.
That's okay, that happens a lot. Yeah, I want to bring it home to Rockford. I have a friend, I'm not going to say her name, she lives right over in Horstman. She's adopted children, she has, drove her children along the way. She took her child down to Legacy, this child had a crack mom, and they basically, they told her, "If you lower your IEP standards, we can accept your child." So obviously, that wasn't going to happen, so she put her back at Lathrop, where she's getting a lot, she's always gotten a lot of help, but she did try a charter school. Secondly, I'm sure the school works perfect for your son. Look, you're here. Your advisor, well, never, ever. But the point of it is, I mean, look around. I mean, except for Diane Chandler here, we're all white, you know? We went over to Glaxos, and I'd say it was 98% black children, but those children, I'm sure have a parent that's involved.
Well, first of all, you're
I'm worried about the kids whose parents, for whatever reason, aren't involved.
Okay, you're raising an excellent point, and this comes up all the time. And that's why it's very important for everyone to set a series of expectations and kind of explain to people how this works. There is no one system or solution that can fix all the problems. And quite frankly, when you're talking about individual people, you know, crack parents, people who don't care, people who hit their child or neglect their child, there is no quote-unquote "education reform" that is going to fix that system, that individual problem. What you have to do is you have to create, or if you're talking about education transformation, you want to create the environment where more of those problems get solved. So there is no way to say, "This is the way to fix things for this person or that person." And for the people in the minority community and in the disadvantaged community across this country, not just here in Rockford, but across this country, you have to, you have to create the opportunity for better schools to arrive at better solutions for all these folks. And it can't, I'm just telling you, we've tried to do it this way for the last 40, 50 years, where we're dumping in more and more money into that system, and it's not working. There's the, so you have to itemize it down. And I'll end with this one thing. There's a gentleman named Uche, William Uche, and he wrote a book called Making Schools Work. And it's actually, there's a lot of different ways to do this, but one of the ways, the simplest ways to transform this system in a way without shocking it, you know, we're not talking about blowing up schools, we're not talking about destroying the concept of public education. The solution comes down to this: Empower the principal in the school, hold him accountable for results, and give him the power to find and work with and create the best environment for the teachers, and listen to the teachers and what they think is the best way to do the school, and have much more school-based management and not as much top-down district management and Illinois State Board of Education and Department of Education management. I think I'm running out of time. I really appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, we got, I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mary. I appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to get to our candidates.
So happy that you guys are here. It's so nice to meet you guys. You all have great ideas. I appreciate that. The National Education Association president once said, within the last year or two, I watched this on YouTube, he said, "It's not about the kids, it's about our power." That's what the NEA president said, president of the National Education Association. "It's not about the kids, it's about the power." When you are interacting with the National Education Association, I am no fan of the NEA. The Tea Party is no fan of the NEA. How is it you're going to protect the kids and not the NEA's power? Whoever wants to answer that first, please go ahead. If everybody wants to answer it, that's fine.
Who should we start with?
You may start with me.
Go, Alice.
Absolutely, because you said you didn't finish the sentence. In what aspect is the power you're talking about? What do they say they wanted the power for? Was it to make things better for children?
Actually, that's not what he said. Alice, well, I'll answer that. What he said was, he said, "It's about our power to bargain and our power to run the show." That's what he said. And it wasn't about, trust me, he said, "This is not about the children." So that's the, when you asked the question, I had to respond to that to just clarify it for you.
All right, may I?
Absolutely.
Go ahead. First of all, though, I didn't get to say what my objectives were for our school system. And one is, I want smaller learning academies, and I want career academies, because everyone is going to go on to college, and I absolutely want part of our children, the children who are not going on to college, to go ahead and learn a career. We need a two-strand secondary school system, not just the one for all, supposedly all college-bound. And you and I know we're not all college-bound, and I do want the kids to get access to a career, a career academy. I could go into that in greater depth with you, but I want to answer your question. I happen to know the local REA, the Rockford Education Association, very well, simply because the president was a teacher in a school that I happen to be principal of, and I know how dedicated she is and her vice president is for the education of all children. And this is what they're very concerned about. I remember Leonard Currents, who contended, showed up in town and had her convocation. Ms. Valen was so excited, she called me and said, "We finally have someone that we can work with. I think we can get a lot of things done for the kids."
Thank you, Alice. We give you one minute to answer. Thank you very much.
But I wanted you to know, that doesn't apply to this current Rockford Education Association.
Thank you. Does somebody else want to answer the question?
Well, I'm a little bit with Alice on this, that it's hard to address something that was maybe taken a little bit out of context. I don't know what the context was, but here's what I'll say. You know, our focus is going to be on protecting stakeholders, and the most important stakeholders are the kids. The kids aren't the only stakeholders. The stakeholders are everyone who lives in this community. Taxpayers are stakeholders, parents are stakeholders, but obviously, the kids are the most important stakeholder. And the job of the board is to represent the community and to represent all aspects of the community, and primarily the kids.
Thank you. Yep?
Well, first of all, I'm skeptical about anyone, no matter what their power is, who uses children as bargaining chips. To me, although I'd like to have seen the whole text of the speech, I can't endorse anything like that. And I, for one, am not endorsed by the local REA. I'm an independent spirit and a free thinker who I think will follow my ethical standards for what's best.
Anybody else want to answer the question?
I think we're, what we're missing here is that as board members, our prime objective, our prime responsibility is to preserve public education. Secondly, then we educate these children that are in this district. We represent the taxpayers of this district. We don't represent the REA. We don't represent any special interest group, and when it comes time to bargain, we bargain in good faith for the people of the community of Rockford. I don't think that we should be pointing fingers at REA, pointing fingers at administration. We have a responsibility. Our responsibility is to ensure public education, to set policies for the district, and tell the administration to follow those policies. And that's what we do.
One minute.
Well, I would agree with Bill on this one. Our job as school board members are, we must have the ability to have a vision for the school district. We also have to look for the future, the long-term goals of the school district. We have to be committed to good work ethics, we have to bring together all the stakeholders of the community, having faith and trust in staff members. We have to build bridges where bridges have been torn down. So is the NEA the issue here in Rockford? Not necessarily. Do we have to be careful that the NEA, the national concepts that they have, don't creep into our town? Yes. Do I think Rockford has a major issue with that at this point? No. I know several schoolteachers personally, and I believe we have a good set of schoolteachers here, so.
Thank you, Vicki. Ken, what?
Yeah, I agree with that. We really don't know what context that statement was made in, but I would say that I know many teachers who focus so much on the importance of children and not about the issues of power with the union and whatever, and they're very dedicated people who want to do the best for our children, and they are a stakeholder that we would need to listen to.
Thank you, Ken. So who has the next question? Start on this side, start on this side? Whoever you want to go. Scott, stand and right there, let's move over this way. Scott?
Hey, how you doing? Thank you all for coming out. A real quick question, kind of dovetails into what David said, and on the national-local thing. From each one of you, and a yes, no is really only all that's needed. As a matter of fact, Jane, I believe you were the one that said the Einstein quote about example. Given the example that was set by our federal government when healthcare was ran down our throat our road, the Republicans stayed there and did it. What is your opinion of the Wisconsin senators and those teachers in the example they set, by doing what they did? How, good example, bad example, supported or down?
Well, I do believe in the democratic principle of collective bargaining. I do believe in that. I've only been a fair share member of a union, because that is one of the requirements. I've never needed the union, so I think I just did my job. Do I think they are shirking their responsibility? I think it's been done before. They've had to do this to make awareness of it. I'd like to see resolution. I would think the teachers have to be in the classroom where they're needed, and that's about all I can say.
I guess what I meant was, was it a good example, or a bad example for our children to have that set?
Well, I think it's a good example, because it is evidencing our right to free speech and demonstration. I don't believe that it is productive at this point. I'd rather see them in the classroom.
Would anybody else like to answer that question?
I would simply say no, it was a bad example for several reasons, but... That being said, I also, you know, I also think as us school Board members, we have to be careful that we don't... Our job is not to draw distinctions between parties, whether it be a school board member, superintendent. Our job is really, really to bring the stakeholders together, and to work for solutions. And if you don't understand that, I mean, there's several websites you can look at to job of a school board member, and there's definitely nonpartisan ways that you're supposed to hold yourself. You're supposed to hold yourself committed to the constituents and to the school district's benefit, not to mine, not to political interests, not to business interests. It's for the children, and we have to remember that.
And I'd just say no, I don't think it was a good idea. I think that being elected to a position, serving in a position as a teacher, as a representative, you can't run and hide, and shirk our responsibilities just because of that one reason. You've got a job to do, do your job.
I guess you wanted a one-word answer, is that what you were asking? Yeah, was it a good example? Then my answer would be no. You need to stay and work things out, and try to work towards a resolution.
You wanted, the question was, what do you think about what they did? And I assume what they did, you're talking about walking out of school?
Yeah.
And not teaching? Yeah. I don't think it's a good idea when anybody walks out on a job. So, my answer is no, I don't think it was a good example.
I guess I have another person that says no also, because I would much prefer that they would be in the school with the teacher, with the kids in the classroom, setting, not only setting that example, but also teaching, because they need their teacher in the classroom.
Thank you for the answers. Question up for the program?
Yes, and my question is about what you, it's a question that we need everybody, every candidate up there. And this is strictly, what do you think is to be the governance model for the school Board? And the relationship between the school Board and the superintendent? And also, I think that, well, I'll let you answer that question, because I have a problem with separation on the Board and in administration. So, I want you to answer that question about, if you're really interested in the education process, and the education of the school, and being accountable to constituents, what is the governance model that the school Board should have, and what should be the relationship between the superintendent and the school Board?
Thank you. Who should we go to this first?
Well, you can start with Mickey and move forward.
All right. I like people who are decisive. Well, first of all, we're supposed to be supportive to, not only the constituents, but we're supposed to be supportive to the superintendent, who we hire. And we have to have faith in that superintendent. We have to be personally responsible for our active actions as school Board members. We have to be cooperative and sensitive, not only to what we do, but how we are perceived when we speak. Those are important issues. And I definitely think that the form of governance that's set up for a school Board is pretty plain. The school Board is the boss per se, but it's supposed to entrust the power in the person that they hire. And I don't believe it should necessarily micromanage every situation. That's what the trust means. You hire that person, you have trust in what they're doing. At the same time...
One minute, Mickey.
All right. At the same time, we're supposed to direct the direction to the superintendent.
As I said a moment ago, the Board's responsibility is to secure public education, to set policy and set the administration on a direction that that policy takes them. The relationship between the Board and the administration, the superintendent, is very, very sensitive. They have to have an ability to talk to each other, they both have to be on the same footing, that the policy that they're setting can be and will be carried out. That's kind of the basis of the whole thing.
Unfortunately, I think there's been a lack of civility on the Board. It's clear in public sessions, so you can only imagine what it is in private sessions. It's creating an adversarial situation, that I would hope most teachers know, you have to collaborate, you have to cooperate. Who, again, I think it's the power structure that I worry about, because there are seven members that need to make a decision that has to be followed through on. And I can see that there has been a dysfunction that is so apparent, not only to the community, but to students and staff as well.
I think that's a great question. I think when you look at the history in the last 20 years, and going through, I think, 13 superintendents in 20 years, you know, what's the right model? And the right model, to me, would be the one that gets the best people on the Board to get the job done. You know, I'm open to the idea of the mayor's idea of, should we appoint him? I think we need to ask that question. Do I know what the right answer is? I do not. But I think our voters ought to be able to be asked that question, and say, "Well, maybe we should ask some, some model that would allow a couple people to be appointed." I, you know, that work, that was in Rockford in the past.
Didn't work there.
And will it work? I don't know. But times are different. I think the second half of that question, so my answer is, you can get the best people for the job. And the second half of that is, you have to have an accountable, trustworthy, good communication relationship with your superintendent.
All good answers have been taken. On the governance models, is that a reference to the mayor's proposal for appointment versus election, or was that just?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
There are a lot of options out there. I have my own opinion, but I would like to know, since you are running for school Board, and if I possibly be on the Board, that you have some governance model, because we don't have one now.
Okay, so you're talking about the governance on the Board. You know, the Board is seven people, they're all elected officials, and they all are elected by their constituency. And so, evaporate just like any other governing body. The relationship between the Board and the superintendent is practically complex, like Bill said. Legally, it's not that complex. The school Board is the governing body, and the superintendent works for the school Board. They hire the superintendent. Generally speaking, the way it should work is, it works best if the Board is not micromanaging, and you hire someone that the Board can work with. But in order for that to work, there has to be, I think, good communication between the superintendent and the Board. And the Board has to be assured that it's getting good information out of the administration, and that it can trust the information that's being given out by the administration, and it's not going to be surprised. Because when something happens, it's the school Board members' phones that light up, and it's their email boxes that, you know, suddenly have 300 emails in them. And when something happens without their knowledge, and they haven't been prepared for it, or warned about it, or given information about it, then I think you see a Board that will start to micromanage more.
We'll also see a Board that's dysfunctional too, because only certain folks on the Board get information, that many of the others do not. I don't really know how to answer the governance model. It couldn't work very well, and it has worked very well in past years. Well, we have had a superintendent that has been transparent. By that, I mean, has been, does give the information to the Board members about something that they are planning or thinking about, or whatever, so that we all can not be blindsided. And we've been blindsided too many times the last couple of years. I know because my phone's lit up, my computer goes buzz, buzz, buzz. And certainly, I would be so supportive of any superintendent that lets us in on the plans before they are done, implemented, or whatever. Because I'm one that would love to support my superintendent, because that's the person that we hired. Thank you.
Thanks, Alice.
Thank you.
Good question and answers. Is there a gentleman here with a question, David?
I wonder how each of you feel about, about attendance zones?
Okay, I think just, Tim hasn't gotten a question yet, but we'll start with him, go to Alice, and then work down.
Well, it's an easy one for me, because I was kind of in the forefront of leading the student assignment effort to go back to zones. So, I'm strongly in favor of them, I think, for a variety of reasons. One of which is cost. The district estimated they would save $4 million a year going to zones, and Ted Biondo put that number closer to $6 million. I tend to trust Ted's numbers. At a time when we're cutting programs and closing schools, I think that's important. At the time, I looked for studies showing whether choice was having any positive impact on student achievement. Couldn't find anything, couldn't find anything locally, couldn't find anything nationally. There's a couple studies out there, just a couple, which really found no impact on student achievement. So, you're talking about something that costs $6 million and has no impact on student achievement. I'd rather spend my money on something that actually is effective. And then, honestly, I think, although you can't prove this, but what I actually believe is that neighborhood schools build neighborhoods. And so, you know, it wasn't an argument that I really made at the time, but I do believe it.
Who, Alice next?
Okay, I'm next. I happened to chair under Dr. Thompson when he was superintendent. That was when the student assignment process began. I was the chairperson for those committees, and we did have meetings around the community so that people could have an opportunity to have input. And we had a large committee that met all summer long, under the direction of Joel Cowan from the School of Medicine. And it included, I wanted to be very certain that it wasn't just administration, because we have too many committees that are two-thirds, staff, administration, and et cetera. I wanted it to include parents, and the stakeholders, and the people who, and teachers, who would be involved in this. And I thought we came up with a pretty good plan for the middle and high schools. I am not so sure about the elementary, but, because I was not involved in that particular process. But I too believe, with my friend that's sitting next to me, that it does build neighborhoods. People who live in a particular area want to know that we'll be going to the... I know how wonderful it was when my children were growing up, that they were able to come home, because we were only a couple of blocks away. And they would have felt safe with them in that process.
Thank you, Alice. That's a minute, thank you. I was in favor of zone schools. I went to an open house that was held at Lincoln when they were debating this, and the first question I asked is, you know, what are the cost savings of one versus the other? And the answer I got from administration was that zone schools would save the district an estimated $4 million, and maybe a little bit more. So, that makes sense to me financially, to do that. I'm familiar with the neighborhood school concept, because that's what I know. My family, my brothers and sisters, my children all went to their neighborhood schools. And I believe that many people in this community, and I think, hearing the feedback at a lot of the two-minute sessions at the Board meeting, that people believe that neighborhoods and the schools are closely linked. And if you're, kids are going to the neighborhood school, they will have more parent involvement.
Well, my own children attended their neighborhood school until it was closed. And then they went into the choice model, and went into the Kappa program, and the arts program at Ellis. I think we still have to have the strength of those programs, like Barbara dual language. We have to meet the needs of the students where they exist. If they show an artistic bent, then they should have the opportunity to go to a Kappa or a gifted program. But they all started in their neighborhood schools, and I believe that concept instills a sense of community for all.
I support neighborhood schools. They call it zone schools now, but I support neighborhood schools. The one thing that we're not taking into account here, we went, the district approved zone schools, then we closed this neighborhood school. That doesn't make sense. It's a contradiction of production in the district. If you're going to have neighborhood schools, have neighborhood schools. If you're not, then you may as well have choice.
Well, excuse me. Thank you. I am definitely for zone schools. I was a product of zone schools myself, being publicly educated. My children's opportunity to go to their neighborhood school was missed when we switched over to busing. My daughter ended up going all the way to Carlson, my son went all the way to Washington, which I'm in the northwest communities center area, so I'm all the way out by Auburn High School, so that's quite a ways for my children to get bused. So, I definitely see the problematic situations, especially when my son was left on the bus three times, and he fell asleep in the, in the chair. So, there's lots of problematic things with that, and just the sheer cost of the busing and different things like that are just, if you would look at any of the busing maps, you would be amazed, people from everywhere going everywhere. And I find that a little confusing myself. Thanks, Mickey.
Good question. Bruno has our next question.
I just wanted to point a clarification. Were you speaking of a specific policy for Rockford, where what you called choice was to have inter-district, like unlimited inter-district busing? Or were you talking about choice in general?
Yes, I mean...
Either way.
You're not familiar with Rockford, are you?
Well, I'm somewhat familiar with some of the things that have gone on in Rockford, but I'm not totally familiar with all the specific things, so...
They implemented, they implemented a policy of unlimited busing, inter-district busing. Well, everybody else other than you here knows this. Under the federal discrimination lawsuit that was filed in 1989 or 1990, they ended up implementing what they called, what they called choice, and what some people would say was a lottery system, where you had to sign up for a school, you would rank three top choices, and five...
Okay. I was just, because the way you were saying that, I just wanted to clarify, because it, obviously, on a broad level, choice where the money follows the child, with a broad range of different options, is, there's actually plenty of research that that is a very, very good option. However, the specific thing that you were talking about was specific to Rockford, and as we know, most things that are federally mandated, in terms of busing or shoveling kids around one part of the district or another, usually don't work out very well.
That's what, that's what's done to...
Could you, could you give to Alice, please?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that because of the desegregation lawsuit in 1989, that was instituted in order to give each child an opportunity to go to a school where the parents felt he would get, he or she would get, a much better education. Because part of that problem with the lawsuit was, it wasn't a problem, it was a fact that kids living on the west side were not getting the same res... that kids living on the west side were not getting the same resources, same opportunities, that children living across the river got. And so, that was why choice was. Pardon?
Cost of money.
The union won in court.
Hold on, hold on, just a second.
And you lost me. Say it again.
Bob, Bob, can I ask you to hold a question, and we'll come back to you for a question? I appreciate your question. Or did anybody else want to answer that question up on the, up on the candidate board? Okay. Can I ask a question one more? I want to ask a real quick question about something. Who's gotten, no, no, who's gotten beat up, who's gotten, who's terrified, who's been terrified by these buses bearing down on you? Who's had encounter with a school bus in there? I have. How can we end busing? Can we end busing? Can you guys get those drivers to drive more safely? Okay. Okay, we're asking, who's next, Bob?
Let's go right from the middle in the back. You can find somebody, David, who's got a good question. I think everybody wants to ask one.
I'll get Steve Wheeler over here. Here you go.
This question is for the candidates that supported zones. So, will you revisit the decisions Dr. Sheffield has made closing schools like Somerdale and Kennedy? The schools that have neighborhoods that actually support the students needing to be in that area? Not a school like Marsh that doesn't have the students in that area to support a school? Why don't you close a school like Marsh that has, what, sixty students in the neighborhood? Instead of closing a school like Conklin that has tons of kids in the neighborhood? Or Somerdale, I'm sorry. Somerdale? Would you revisit those decisions?
I think that all decisions that have been made recently need to be revisited.
Oh, good, good.
I was not in favor of closing of the schools, but I wanted to point out one thing that came before, is that we did set up a policy of site-based management, where the money does follow the student, or is supposed to follow the student. Does it? I don't know. But we do have a program of site-based management, and that money is supposed to follow the child. So, both, you answer your questions, yes, I would love to revisit that question, the school closures, and I would love to find out the answer about site-based management and where the money goes.
Just so everybody knows, in order for, we're trying to get everybody to be able to answer a question up there, so we give them a minute, and then we try to get everybody in the audience, everybody will get a chance to ask a question. I just want to be able to do it so that we're not like yelling at each other, and so that we can still, you know, be like polite with each other. So, go ahead, and the next person, oh, you're fine. No, you're fine. Next person, Nikki?
Okay.
Just answer it real quick, and we'll move on, and so we can get everybody to answer a question.
I would like to revisit it, but knowing, you know, saying that, I would like to revisit because, first of all, I don't have all the information that the board had sitting in front of me, so I don't know exactly their reasoning. But I do know that, you know, a lot of their decisions were based on the tier system, how many kids they could fit in school, you know, which school was, would hold more children to close from one to the other, and then add those students to it. There was a lot that went into it that they studied, and they had to, there's law that goes into that, there's state mandate, there's federal issues, whether it be handicapped accessible, things like that. So, it's more complicated than just saying, you can't close Kennedy, and you can't close this school, you know, because they're in a, I think, I really think, you have to listen to, I've been at all the board meetings, and that's a lot of the issues, whether or not they can close the schools, because either the size, how many tiers they could put in, et cetera.
And that Dr. Sheffield proposed Somerdale and Kennedy, that's not true. At the school board meeting, those were proposed by another school board candidate to replace schools, not by Dr. Sheffield. And if you study the population of Kennedy and Somerdale, the majority of the kids do not come from the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Jane, please.
Okay, I'm saddened by the fact that the public hasn't had enough input into the closing of these schools. To me, that's an incredible error in judgment. At the last forum, I had a solidarity pledge that four of us signed to revisit the closing of the schools. I don't like the thought of inheriting the former board's problems. I think we need to have the information, and it should have been disseminated across the community before anything was done.
In answer to your question, would I be open to revisiting that? I think we have to be. That's a responsibility, or we're open to input from the community. You know, the issue that I have is, you know, it wasn't clear and open and transparent about what was the criteria being used, and that, you know, what role did performance of the kids in that school matter? But reality is, and this is not anything that anybody in this room doesn't know, we have more building capacity than we have students.
That's right.
All right? And if we want to be fiscally accountable and responsible, some clues, some schools are going to have to close. No one likes it, but it's reality.
And sort of building on what Ken said, so we know that schools have to close, and I was very critical of the process that they followed for this. The problem is, you've got to look at timing now. So, it's going to be April 5th, the election, then the board is what, going to gather more information. At some point, a decision has to be made. I'm not going to close out reconsidering decisions that have been made, but I think it would be extremely disruptive, and at some point, we ju, they may not have been the best decisions, they may have been decisions that we, if we had been making them, we would have disagreed with, but at some point, these decisions have to be made, they have to be implemented, and we have to respond.
Well, I will say it again, the board was the last to know about the schools, which schools were going to be closed. So, we didn't have a great deal of time to discuss together and plan together. I certainly heard from a lot of parents, a lot of families. And I, for one, I agree that we did have to close schools because of the number of students that we are not having now in our school system, so we have a lot of empty seats. But there are schools that I would like to have seen stay open, but as to Kennedy and Somerdale, I agree with the lady over here, that the neighborhoods aren't out there, the students aren't out there for those particular schools, but...
Thank you, we got limited to a man, I appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to pick people, and I apologize. I want to pick people I haven't seen before also, and then I want to pick some folks that I might have seen before. But I want to go with people I haven't seen before, because those are folks that came specifically to ask specific questions. So, for example, this young lady over here with the long black hair, she's new here, so I would like to ask her a question. She can ask a question, I'm sorry.
I guess this question brings more directly to Mr. Rollins. First, it's really good news to hear that board members will actually do some research to get some information. You said that you looked at researching about schools and so forth. I'd just like to draw attention to include what Ms. Hayes said. Please look for studies showing how specialized programs fit into this choice thing, and how is it worth sacrificing specialized programs for the sake of schools? But my question is, in your five-minute speech, you mentioned that you would like more community involvement, and everybody would like more community involvement, but it seems like nobody talks about how the mechanism of this is supposed to happen. Who do you mean by the community? Do you mean the parents? Do you mean the businessmen? And for either group, what is it specifically you want or expect from them?
Let Tim start this, and just want to limit answers, not to limit anybody, but just so everybody in the audience gets a chance to ask everybody a question.
Community is, everybody has a stake in the schools, we're all stakeholders. One of the criticisms I actually had in the student assignment process was that the administration seemed to be focusing on current students, and rather than the community as a whole. And there are mechanisms to get community involvement. The way you do it, the way I'd like to see happen is through more advisory committees to the board, that would actually be board committees that would be subject to the Open Meetings Act. We've had committees, other committees in the past, which we don't have anymore. The board currently operates with two committees, an education committee and an operations committee. They have in the past had an actual finance committee, which oversaw the budget. I think, given what's been going on, and the questions that have been raised, I think we need to have an actual finance annual budget committee with members of the community involved in that, who have enough finance expertise. We've had strategic planning committees in the past, and I think we probably need something like that, that has community involved in it. And again, community, community to me is everybody, all the stakeholders, parents, taxpayers, businesses, staff, REA, they're all members of the community, they're all stakeholders, they all ought to be participating in the process, they all, we ought to be listening to them, they ought to have a seat at the table.
Let's have Alice answer it next, and then we'll go to Ken.
I would be very appreciative if the board would be in a position to have subcommittees made up of community members, because we are all stakeholders, and we're all important, we all have something to say, and we can probably all come together and compromise. I recall just recently, we had a finance committee, the board never did know until it made its report, who the members of that particular committee were. And that's not the way to operate a school system. I mean, if you're an administrator, you need to communicate with your bosses as to your plans for this committee, or that committee, or whatever. But I certainly would include each and every member of the community that wanted to have something to say.
I agree with Tim, and we have discussed this together, basically, the battery going bad, maybe, I'm not sure. But I have served on several boards, I currently serve on one of the advisory boards of Rock Valley College, I have served on state-level boards, and the way to get community involvement is through subcommittees and having at-large members on various committees to give the input, and you just try to get the best brains there, and people who have concerns, and particularly people who have ideas about solutions. So, I'm all in favor of the idea of expanding the committee structure of the board.
Well, I think we have some outstanding parent groups throughout our community schools. Barber, Montessori, Guilford, they're so invested in their schools, and I wish we could have that in all our schools. So, I'd like to see a parent council, and more community involvement through the parents, through their PTOs. As far as the businesses and how they can help us, I would like, or encourage them to have school-to-work apprenticeships, and trying to foster the career academies that I know Alice has advocated for a long time. I'd actually like to see a student on the board. I think that would make sense.
I agree. I think that we have PTOs, we have very active groups and organizations within the city. When I did serve on the board, I visited every single school in the district during my tenure on the board. I never left the students out, never left the teachers out, never left the parents out. And I can assure you by the sheer number of phone calls, they never left me out. So, I only want to add one thing. When we talked about closing schools, and you didn't get the information, and it was handed to you as you went in the board, into the meeting, how in the heck can you vote yes or no? You can't vote for something you don't know anything about.
And I hope this doesn't sound self-serving or anything, but I often had a thought of the collaboration of all the members up here. One of, like, we do have the mayor raising issues that he hasn't had enough input, but I thought about a city commission, commission subcommittee, a county commission subcommittee, a parents, whether it be through the PTO groups, also businesses that are located in the school sub-districts, that they would have a group, like a subcommittee people, the business people, that were willing to get interested in the schools in their zones. And also, I love Bill Melbok's idea of students, because these children are very bright, and they definitely need a seat at the table.
Thank you. Okay, wait. Jane, I'm sorry, whoever it was. I need to see, I'm trying to do three, I haven't seen, three faces I haven't seen, to one face that I have seen, so I apologize if I don't get to you right away. This young lady, I've never seen her before, so here you go.
I don't want to see me again either, but anyways, okay. I think that Ms. Hayes hit on the, what I'm concerned about is, before the lawsuit, we had a great disparity between the west side and east side schools. How do we remedy that, going back to the zone and the neighborhood schools, which I think most of us support here? Parent involvement, parent PTOs are the key, but how do you nurture and grow those in communities that is no neighborhood? What is your idea of, that's the key? I don't want to go back to west side, east side schools, and that's why fear we're doing with the zoning. How do you propose bearing against that?
Ken hasn't gotten a question first. We'll start with Ken, and work towards Jane to the end, and finish with Tim.
I think it's critical that we avoid getting into that situation. I think you do it by asking. You ask parents. I've had discussions with people in schools that, this was a person who happened to be at West Middle School, and a previous principal felt that she didn't really ever get asked. So, you know, some, you at least got to ask first for parental involvement, and be surprised, maybe you'll get it when you, when you at least expect it, or whatever. So, I think someone in the back once said, you know, you can balance things out, and it doesn't have to be east side, west side, and it's about the quality of the teachers you should put in that school, and the principal, and the parent involvement, so...
So much is about leadership, regardless of what level of leadership. So, I do believe that there are models that we should follow. Look at the Barber parents, the Guilford parents, the Montessori, to see how they've become so representative. And I think perhaps choice is part of that, because they chose those schools, so, but we need to replicate those models. So, I would encourage those parents to go out into the schools where there's been a lack of PTO visibility. And there are so many people I know here today that are true westsiders, they're devoted to improving the west side for all the kids. I think putting the better teachers in the west side school is a great avenue to do just that, too.
You have to get the teachers, contract, be willing to let them, the administration place the teacher where they want them to be, rather than a teacher placing themselves where they want to be. I think that the west side community feels so disenfranchised from the system, they have for so many years, that it's become habitable. What we need to do is remember that they're humans, with children, they're humans with feelings, and that we have to get out there and talk to them, bring them into the program, bring them into the system. And like they're saying, the reason they have never done anything is because we've never asked them to do anything. I think if we ask, they will come.
I've had this question brought up in several different ways, but, you know, I believe the groups that I just spoke of, whether it be the business people, whether it be the parents or student boards, you know, if you could get collaboration between those people, you'd have a group of citizens that care about their community and their community school, and that there would be something done with the PTO, where if there's a need in that school for certain children, or for that matter, families, they could go and meet that need as a community. That's what, I believe that's what communities were supposed to be, when I was raised, the community was supposed to reach out to those who were less fortunate, or who have situations, and build in those, to build them up, to reach out, give a hand. And I think that's how we correct that. It's partially a societal problem as well.
This is for all of you. If you were put in a position of selecting a new school superintendent, what qualities would you look for in that superintendent?
Start with this end, good question.
Well, first of all, I think a superintendent should have the basic, you know, qualifications that are required for the job, whether it be education background. We have seen in the past that we've elected or hired people that didn't have those, so, I mean, that's a basic foundation. Then, you build upon their experience overall with children. And I know they're administrators, but I believe that all administrators should have a ground-up mentality, not a, not a top-down mentality, and I think they should have worked with children to be an administrator, as opposed to being an administrator who worked with children. Thank you. Thank you. I also would definitely expect that they would have a firm understanding of how to work with the board and how to communicate in an open manner and how to have new technologies developed in that.
My primary, and I'm not saying that this is going to happen, you know, but the lifespan of a superintendent on the average in any one district is three and a half years. That's history. Dr. Epps told me that way back then. It's three and a half years, they know that, and they kind of plan for that. But my idea of what a superintendent for Rockford should have is somebody who has a grasp of Rockford. You have to have a grassroots idea of what Rockford is. Yeah, we're the third largest city in Illinois now, but we're also one of the smallest thinking societies in Illinois. We have what we believe is our neighborhood ideal. We love our town, we love our children, we love everything about it. So that person has to understand that mentality we have as people, that we are a big town with a very small mentality. And I don't mean that they're dumb.
Okay, as a former teacher, I think first and foremost, an educational leader has to have the proper credentials, and they have to be in the education sector, not in the business world. Education is a service profession, it is not an industry. We are holistic in our approach, we work very hard for our credentials and keep them up. Secondly, I would think that we could find a superintendent within our own ranks, within our own region. To allude to what Bill is saying, we need someone who knows Rockford, who knows its idiosyncrasies, who has lived here, whose children have been in the schools. That would increase the tenure of any superintendent if they knew Rockford. Thirdly, I think we need someone we can trust. Now, how do we know if we can trust? Well, we can assess their reputation, we know their background, we can do Google searches, we can find facts. So I think there's a wealth of people within our ranks that have credentials, and I'd like to look at those people.
Great question, I think that's a very, very good question. Leadership, I would look for the qualities in a superintendent, someone who has strong leadership skills, someone who's able to set the vision and help us get there. They would have to excel at communication and be accountable for their actions and their behaviors. I believe that, with Jane, that I, it's amazing to me that we haven't been able to find a qualified candidate from within our own city. I think that would be a great advantage for us to do that and maybe have someone who could succeed for a longer period of time than three and a half years or less.
There was a reference to the movie Waiting for Superman, and I think part of the problem is that's what we've been doing here, is looking for Superman. And, you know, Superman doesn't exist, but when you go out and you look for Superman and you hire somebody to come in, you're basically saying, "Come in and save us." And what are they going to do? They're going to try to save you, and they're going to come in with their own programs, their own visions. And Phil is absolutely right, I looked up that statistic, and still it's actually 3.2 years in Illinois right now, average. So what happens, and what we've been seeing, is every three to three and a half years, everything changes. And the teachers will tell you that, one of their biggest complaints right now is that they can't get any traction, because everything changes every three to three and a half years. So I guess what I'm, I hate to put it this way, but I guess what I'm saying is, I would not be looking for Superman. I would be looking for somebody to come in and, I guess the phrase that I've been thinking of, someone with quiet competence, who would simply listen to the community, whether that's somebody who knows about the community or from outside the community, listen to the community, talk to the community, and administer our schools, and do it in a way that we can start to provide some continuity so that we can start, hopefully, affecting some positive change over time.
Thanks, Tim.
Well, everyone has said everything that I would like to have said. This has been part of the problem, that we have brought people in that we haven't thoroughly, thoroughly examined. I think this last time, well, two times before, we did send people down to the district that they were the superintendent of, and unless you really sit in a coffee shop and you talk to the people in the street, you don't always get the information that one really needs to make a good decision and bring in a superintendent. It's going to come in and assess the community first, come in slow, get to know the people, get to know the staff, the teachers, the union, the business community, the entire community, everyone, and then involve people in whatever changes or whatever it seems that needs to be changed or helped along or whatever. And work with the staff, with the union, with the community, and with the business people, together, whether it's, I want that person to be a good communicator, not surprise the board with anything.
Well, thank you, Alice. I'm glad Levon Sheffield wasn't here today. Paul.
Because she's not local, and it sounds to me like nobody would like to have somebody from Louisiana telling Rockford students and Rockford parents how to run their school district. I don't like, first of all.
That's okay, the mayor wants to.
That's the mayor.
In the audience, we're open.
I've sat here and listened to the entire group of youth that all who are wanting to be elected, and you have talked constantly about the constituencies which you deal with, and I have heard only one single mention of the largest constituency in Rockford, that's the taxpayers. The people you are talking about represent 28 to 30% of the households in Rockford, and yet you are more than happy to take 50% of the taxes that the other 70% of the people in Rockford pay and waste them. You waste them. You being the school board and the administration of the school. You are spending $13,000 with administration costs, over $13,000 per pupil. You could send every pupil in that school or in your school system over to Key School, and they would get the finest education in the state of Illinois for $85,000.
My question is, if you are elected to the board, what are you going to do to bring into the discussions the real taxpayers of this town, the real people who are having to pay for these excessive costs for education? Should we start with Alice over here?
I'm a taxpayer too, and I hate to pay the taxes since I'm out of pension. My pension isn't that large for the taxes. However, my children received an excellent education for the taxes that you paid and I paid, all of us paid. I am, if I am elected, I certainly am going to be watching very carefully how that money is being spent, because I've not been happy the way that it has been going these last couple of years. When Dr. Thompson was here, we were on the state watch list, ready to be taken over by the state of Illinois because of our financial problems that we were having. And thanks to Dr. Thompson and his team, worked very hard, and we were back up on this, off the state watch list, and we had money and we had a balanced budget. Now, look where we're at, I'm not happy, can't.
Well, fiscal responsibility was one of the three themes that I sounded in my opening statement, and, you know, I am the one who's talked about the taxpayers, so hopefully you understand that I am interested in taxpayers. And I do think that we need to focus on fiscal responsibility. It is a fact that the budget in the school district has increased $100 million the past four years, and the very first thing that we have to do, I think, is figure out why and how that happened. You know, people, I get, I usually get the question, "Where do you get in to fix the budget?" And my answer is, "I can't tell you how to fix the budget, because I don't know what's wrong with it right now." We need to get that information. I do want to address one thing that you said, though. I think it is unfair to compare the cost of the school district to the cost of Key. This public school district spent a tremendous amount of money on special education, which is an unfunded federal mandate. Everybody who wants, who has a kid with special needs, those kids go to the public schools, they're not going to Key, and that has something to do with the cost difference. And as a society, that's a decision that, you know, we didn't make here, I mean, none of us probably made that decision, but it's been made, it's federal, it's federal law, and that explains part of the cost of public education, and you do have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I was going to say the exact same thing with the federal mandated programs are, do cost the public school system a lot more money. I believe that my, I've been clear that fiscal accountability is an important stance of mine, I think we have to be transparent, we have to reduce our operating expenses and use the taxpayers' money as wisely as we can, and everyone in this room is a taxpayer in Rockford.
I am still an advocate of a complete forensic audit of the budget, and I believe in checks and balances, and I believe that we can't shirk our responsibility as taxpayers. I do believe that if we are going to have a sustainable community, we have to have sustainable schools. I believe the future is in the schools for the community as well.
All monies that the district gets are taxpayer monies, whether it come from the federal government, the mandated programs, from the state government, it's all our money. You know, we all pay it, and that's, you know, that's a given. I guess we don't talk about taxes when we're up here, because there's very little we can do other than to get on the board and to try and oversee what the programs that the district is offering, and trying to keep the cost to the district, when I say district, I say taxpayer, too, to keep those costs under control. We have programs that are working wonderfully, we have programs that aren't working so well. We need to eliminate those programs that are costing the district more money than they're producing as far as rewards to the district. So if I didn't mention it, I'm sorry, but I do realize that all monies in the district, all monies that we work with are taxpayer monies.
Well, I would, to answer the fiscal responsibility side of things, first of all, I've been a business owner and I've been a customer, so having said that, whenever you purchase a product, you want to get the best value for your dollar, okay? The state, federal government have red-taped some of the school district expenditures, and we do want, do not have any choice on what we do with that. Like they had said earlier, we definitely have to spend money on special education, on different things, whether it be psychiatrists and different things, that's mandated. So there are a lot of red tape issues that we have. If we had a forensic audit, we could go and we could see some of those expenditures, we could find ways to reduce some of those, we could find things, programs that aren't working, programs that don't need to exist, and we can bring that before the community and let the community say, "Hey, do you want this, if you want it?" If I were doing a job for you, I could tell you, "I've got three tiers of job, do you want the better job, the medium job, or the cheapest job?" And I think that's how we have, kind of have to approach it in a sense.
Thanks, Mickey.
Well, speaking about the budget, I just wish that everybody would comment on how they would be handling the negotiations with the teachers when it comes time to do that, because the teacher salaries are such a big portion of the budget, and as a taxpayer, you have to say that many people's salaries have been greatly reduced, they don't have a lot of the benefits that teachers have, and it doesn't mean that we don't support teachers, but can't get blood out of the turds, you know, and people are making a lot less.
And I encourage everybody afterward to hang out and talk to the candidates afterward. And Michael, I apologize if we couldn't get to you, but when you have everybody that has a question, and then you want to go home, I apologize. I apologize.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
All I'm saying is that when you said at the beginning of a Rockford security, which I'm a supporter of myself, I expect you to follow your own.
I apologize, Mike.
If you wanted to.
I apologize, Mike. I'd like to. Who wants to answer the question up on the front? I apologize. Thank you.
My answer to your question is, I've always said from the beginning, I want to hold everybody accountable that's part of the stakeholders accountable, okay? Whether it be the board, the superintendent, teachers, parents, children, okay? We all have to be accountable, period. We have a lack of that in this day and age, it seems to be. But my point is.
Thirty seconds for each of you.
My point is, yes, I would definitely look at the budgets of the teachers, because they are getting 70% of the budget, and that's a huge problem, and we need to look at that.
Very simple, teachers, educators, all administrators have got to start paying their fair share of their health care and their retirement. My wife and I don't have anybody paying for our retirement, they shouldn't have any.
Can't speak for all teachers, but the ones I do know are more than willing to make concessions.
I think the union members do understand the financial situation and the expense reductions that are needed, and they're willing to have dialogue.
I agree with Ken, I mean, everything that I've seen and heard makes me think that the unions know that there's going to be a change. I don't think any of us can be that, any more specific than that. The way negotiations work is, you know, they're going to be throwing 30 things on the table, the district will be throwing 30 things on the table, and there's going to be a lot of horse trading. And until, I don't think anyone sitting here knows the cost of any particular proposed change to the contract, so, but we're all aware of the issue, and I'm sure it's going to be on the table.
You said it all. I do know that the teachers' union will be ready and is willing to make concessions as far as health care is concerned, and a number of other instances as well. And you do, that's true, you sit around a table and you bargain back and forth, you throw an item on the table, the other side responds, and you go back and forth until you reach a compromise. But I do know that there will be compromises coming from the union.
Thank you, Alice. Here you go. Last question.
For you business people up there that haven't been involved in schools, but you have intelligent ideas, I'm wondering if you're all willing to spend some time like boss undercover, get down and dirty, and spend time, not a walk-through, but spend time in the classrooms, volunteer, I mean, go undercover, be in the classroom for an hour, and see what's really going on in our schools.
Okay, why don't we do a yes or no for that question? Big, yes or no? Alice, yes or no?
Well, I'll say it, yes, because I've been 25 years in the classroom.
I asked you, Alice, I know.
Okay, you know me, so.
Jim, yes or no?
Sure, I have all the schools already.
Yes, and if you know, Swedish American's a partner with Jackson School, we have been over there several times.
I don't, I don't think anybody in here knows how hard a teacher works unless they've been in that classroom.
Yes, and if you read my bio and stuff, I've done it, I love it, I'd love to be a teacher for a day.
It's got to be more than a day.
Absolutely, yes, and as I said before, I have a ground-up mentality and I have a top-down mentality, I would be in there getting my hands dirty.